All right, good evening. It is 6:00 PM, Monday, June 24th, City Council meeting. I'd like to acknowledge the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Father, we thank you for the day. Thank you for the beauty of it. Thank you for the opportunity we have to serve this community tonight. Just pray that you'll guide and direct our conversations and decisions to be made here tonight, in your name of prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Nicole, welcome.
Councilmember Campson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Gosian?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Hahn?
Councilmember Carroll?
Here.
Mayor Pounds?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
Carly David.
My name is Carly David, and my husband, Stephen, and I live at 709 Palm Boulevard. And we appreciate you all. And I, we have come to numerous meetings and have been streaming some of the other ones as well, and we realize that you really don't put much time in. But maybe in the future, it's unbelievable how much time you do put in. But I'm here because of the flooding issue on IOP. We've owned a house at 2202 Waterway Boulevard for 25 years. Our son and his family live there now, and there has always been flooding in this issue, in this area. This is not new. But we've had too much water in the street and in our yards, but until December 17th, we didn't have the river running through our house. In fact, it was so bad, our kids moved in with us, and after over $100,000 plus in repairs in four months, they finally moved back home. Several other houses around 22 were flooded. Numerous cars were abandoned because the water literally ran through them. One of my friend's car was in the garage, and it was gone because of the water, and they live in this area as well. Interesting enough, the drainage system was not working correctly then. We sent emails. We took pictures of the drains outside the house. We took pictures of the water, of the street, of the water running through our great room, and we emailed them to Douglas and to Desiree. Had the drains been working properly, the house might have been spared, probably would have, because the water would have had someplace to go. And both Desiree and Douglas responded back at that point. But the project that has evolved and changed, the project that they're getting, they're working on now, and we're afraid that Waterway between 21st and 32nd is going to be an afterthought or left out. They've been working on drainage for months, attempting to alleviate the flood on the north part of Waterway and on the interior part of the island. Did that cause the water to shift and make its way to 2202, as one of the surveyors suggested right after the flood? Or did the fix of Wild Dune several years ago cause the water to divert and change the flow? We're avid boaters, and we know that Breach Inlet has changed over the last few years. Is it so clogged that even more water is shoved ashore when we have those king tides? Or is all of the construction with loads of dirt and loads of cement, is that the cause of the increased water running in a new direction? Well, probably all of those above. But we need help regardless of what the reason is. Directly behind our house at 2202, a ground-level house was taken down, and all the foliage was stripped from the land. And a new house on stilts is being built. And if something isn't done, I can see now, because it's, they're elevating it, all the water's going to rush in now from a different direction, as well as from Waterway Boulevard.
Ms. David, I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
I will wrap.
Thank you.
The issue is certainly complicated, and after we listened to the Ways and Means meeting, we became more confused and more concerned. Solutions for the flood mitigation project were discussed in the meeting, and Thomas and Hutton, as well as our administration, were focused, it seemed to me, on 32 to 41, 32nd Street to 41st Street. The engineer suggested that 21st to 32nd didn't have a problem. He said that it's not a challenge engineering-wise down at that end of the island, and that's scary for those of us who have property at that end of the island. Obviously, and probably, obviously, they and probably most of you haven't been on that road during a storm. We want to be on record to make sure that the south end of the island is being taken care of, and just as important, we want to make sure that what is being planned in our community is going to protect our property as well. I'm sure you will prioritize the residents over the golf course. Of course, water's going to follow the path of least resistance, and today, if the south end of Waterway isn't protected, those homeowners are at risk of, are at risk, even if it's minor flooding. Again, 2202 Waterway Boulevard can't handle stormwater, and we ask for your continued cooperation and help with the situation. Thank you very much. I do have a postscript today. This afternoon, I got an email from Desiree inviting Stephen, inviting me to come and chat with her, to go over the plans, so that we sort of better understand them. They are confusing, they're technical, and maybe that will help. And hopefully, 21 through 32 is included in the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you. I can assure you, the entire length of Waterway is included in the plan. So you can get more from Desiree and Douglas, but... Next item is approval of the previous meeting's minutes. We have a public hearing on May 28th, regular city council meeting on May 28th, special city council workshop on June 18th, and all the committee meeting minutes are attached. Need a motion? So move.
Second.
Second. Any changes, edits? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Next item, special presentations. Presentation of new employees, Janice, our HR manager.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'd like to introduce you to Brian Tuie. Do you enjoy him? Come on up.
Brian's not so new anymore, but...
He isn't, you're right. Brian Tuie is our Battalion Chief of Training and is also a paramedic. He was raised in northern Nevada, lived in Sun Valley, Idaho, before moving to South Carolina. He attended Truckee Meadows College for his science degree and attended College of Southern Idaho to earn his paramedic, paramedicine degree. He began his fire career as a wildland firefighter. Want to explain a little bit?
Yeah, so I started out as a hot shop, your land management, which was a great job when you're young. But, and then continued on with my career in the Forest Service as an engine captain. But yeah, it was a great job, exciting. I had to travel all over, usually the west, but yeah, then it became time to structure firemen and settle down with the family, and so yeah, things changed a little bit.
Was it tough to leave Sun Valley?
Yes.
We've talked about that, too. He was previously employed with Mount Pleasant as a captain paramedic. He enjoys restoring a 1973 Land Rover Series 3 and a 1966 Triumph Tiger motorcycle, correct?
That's right, yeah.
Welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Sean Harsha, can you please join me? Sean is a man of many, many words, and he will not deny this, okay? So I had to really par down what he wrote me. So he might catch you later to fill you in with the gaps. So Sean is from Ohio. He attended Winnebago University and graduated at the top of his class at the Ohio State Firefighters Recruiting School. Sean held several fire positions in the Columbus, Ohio, area before moving to Charleston. He last held a position as deputy fire marshal for the town of Mount Pleasant. In his spare time, he's a drummer for Sufferin' Moses, which you can hear on Spotify and Pandora. And he's a big fan of Formula One and Indy car racing. Welcome, Sean. I hardly sound loud, am I?
Glad you could join us.
Also, newish.
Thank you, Sean. Thomas is new to the police department. Thomas grew up in Brooklyn, New York. You're going to hear another candidate that we've hired also from New York. He couldn't make it tonight. Seems to be a little bit of a running theme. I think we have three of you from New York now, don't we? We do. He attended New York City Police Academy and has a 30-year career with the NYPD, achieving the rank of lieutenant, which in the last 20 years was in the highway patrol unit. He retired in August 2023 and moved to Mount Pleasant. He enjoys photography and coaching his son's baseball team. Welcome.
I know we, it tells you how long it's been since we've done that.
Yeah, we have a handful of other folks that couldn't make it tonight, so we'll plan on doing this at the next council meeting, so you all can meet our new folks.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Janice. Next item is new business. Most of this we've discussed at length at last week's workshop, so maybe we can fly through if you, unless you have new questions. First one is consideration of proposal from Triad Construction in the amount of $17,010 to develop conceptual design and cost of options for relocation with City Hall.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, consideration of an allocation of $25,000 for purchase and installation of holiday decorations coming from our Muni A-Tax budget.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any other discussion, questions? Ashley, just give me a wave if you need to say something. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, consideration proposed fiscal 25 budget for the 30% state A-Tax to be used for advertising and promotion of tourism per Section 6-4-10. You recall, this has been reviewed and approved by the A-Tax Advisory Committee already, so need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Further questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is discussion of fiscal 25 state budget provisos. There are two provisos in the state budget that may be approved on Wednesday by the Senate and the House, and it goes to the governor, so this is not final at this point, just two things to make you aware of. And I know Desiree's had some conversation with our lobbyists back and forth today. So Desiree, you want to just give a quick, quick update on this?
Yes. So these two budget provisos that the mayor is referencing are 5525 and 5526, and they were introduced in the Senate by Senator Goldfinch. And essentially, what these amendments would do is trigger legal action against the state OCRM, who is the jurisdictional entity that regulates the beach. And if there is any discrepancy either between what the state establishes as being a beach, based on the definitions established by the, by the state, if the homeowner, this is budget proviso 5526, in the amendment that deals with the beaches definition, if the state establishes an area to be an active beach based on that definition, and an owner does not agree with that position and allows the homeowner to challenge the state's position in court, if the owner is successful and the court rules in favor of the owner, that the state, in this example, would not have any jurisdiction over this area called beaches, then the state would be responsible in paying that property owner any attorney's fees associated with, with that, with that situation. So would have implications to the state if they find themselves having to pay attorney's fees for all these property owners that may be challenging a state definition of beaches. The other proviso 5525 is related to erosion control, and this amendment would force OCRM to reassess all of the violations associated with hard erosion control structures that had been placed, particularly those that were placed after the Beachfront Management Act was enacted in 2018, May of 2018, and reassess those violations with the new rules and the new baseline and the setback line, and allow a property owner to challenge that enforcement action from the state. And if the courts rule in favor of the property owner, again, the state OCRM would be responsible for paying attorney's fees for that, reimbursing the property owner for attorney's fees and any other expenditure that the owner has, has expended in trying to remedy a potential violation. So both budget provisos were, were approved at the Budget Conference Committee. Now they're going back to the House and the Senate at a special session. They're meeting on Wednesday. After that, those would go to the, to the governor for his vetoes, and he has five days to decide whether or not he'll veto any of these. This is just two of several budget provisos that have been introduced. These two are, potentially will impact our community because we're a coastal community. And then he has to sign the budget before June 30th, like, like we do. So that's just a heads up. I know I've shared some documentation with the council about these two budget provisos. We'll keep you posted. The other thing I wanted to, not necessarily a budget proviso, but the request that the city made to the state for budget allocations, you all recall, I had reported that of our requests, $1 million for beach nourishment and $1,250,000 had been introduced in both the House and the Senate towards stormwater, stormwater drainage improvements. Those were left in the version that the Budget Conference Committee is bringing back forward to the Senate and the House and to the governor. So unless they're vetoed, we hope that they'll stay, they'll stay in the budget and will receive those, those funds, so.
So is there any action to be taken here?
No, so this is just a discussion and an update.
Well, I would, I would like to state, this council is strongly opposed to these provisos. Strongly opposed them. I'd like to see the city council take a position on this, but I can only speak for myself. Seems like to me we're handcuffing the state agencies, and that they may be hesitant to bring action in the future, that, knowing that they could be impacted by having to pay attorney's fees and other court costs. And I'd like to entertain a motion that the council come on record as we're, we're opposed to this.
I don't think that's on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. It's a discussion. Yep. Not a consideration.
The option that's available to the council, you can add an item to, you can add an item for discussion and action to the agenda. You would need a majority vote for that. And there's just, I would review really quickly whether or not this, you can, a motion to add an, an action item to an agenda has to be proven to be because of exigent circumstances. So I think the motion would include why we think, or the council believes that this is a, a matter that needs, needs to take action today, based on the exigent circumstances. Certainly, the fact that the budget needs to be approved in five days could probably be a justification, but that's up to the council.
And one more thing.
Well, this just, just came up to us tonight, and they're going to have a vote on it on Wednesday. I think it's extraordinary circumstance, and I'd like to see us suspend the rules of order to entertain a motion to, that is just, the council is against this proviso. I think it's, it's in light of everything that's going on, on our beachfront, I think it's extremely timely that we make a statement about this. How long has this been in the works with, with the, the budget committees? And it just come up last week?
It was, it's been very recent.
I've been reading about it.
I think about a week or two. And that's one of the challenges that has been expressed by, particularly the South Carolina Beach Advocates, who the city, the city's a member of that organization, has come out in opposition to these budget provisos. One of the concerns that's been raised is the lack of public comment, and the lack of discussion that these provisos have had, because they were introduced as a budget proviso. So they haven't gone through any committee, have not had any public comment that I know of. And I think that that's part of the challenge.
They were introduced on the floor. I mean, literally a week or two ago.
Well, so I, to push this along, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules of order and be able to entertain putting a vote on the floor on, on these provisos.
I'll second that. Second, Elizabeth.
Yep.
Other comments? Conversation?
Yeah, just one, one addition. I think the budget provisos are good for one year.
That's correct. Yes, they're only, they're only law the same period as the budget. So they, unless they are renewed at the end of the fiscal year budget, they go away, essentially, after a year.
I really don't want to hamstring OCRM in any way that might make them less effective in protecting our beaches, so.
And the state legislator has, they've all voted yes on this, correct? It's passed the legislature?
No.
Not, not all of them.
The legisla, it's coming out of the committee, correct?
Coming out of the committee.
The conference committee, and I believe the representative from Charleston voted against it.
So just to be clear, I think, I may have this backwards, but the process was, it was brought up in the Senate. The Senate kicked it, since it's a proviso, they had to get House approval, they had to kick it over to the House. The House disagreed with the Senate's version, so now it's in a committee to reconcile the differences and bring something out for, by the end of the week, so that the governor can either approve it or not approve it.
That's correct.
Well, interim staff, Wednesday, there is a vote on the floor. You're saying it in the House.
So they have to, the, the, the committee, joint committee has to reconcile the proviso to bring forward, right?
Done.
So they, is it the Senate version?
Correct.
Okay, so it's the Senate version.
But it now goes back to the House and the Senate on Wednesday.
To me, I don't know that, and I understand Councilman Ward's concern that this could inhibit people from, you know, moving far, or from, or OCRM from filing anything, but that's their job. This is state law. And at the end of the day, a judge has to rule that OCRM's jurisdiction is, is not what they claim it is, for this to be valid. So I don't, I think it's way premature for the city of Isle of Palms to get involved with something that's a state law at this point, and it's a one-year issue. So a judge has to rule that OCRM's jurisdiction is not what they claim it is, for this to kick in. So why would we get involved with it?
I think we would get involved in order to support the beach, the beach advocacy letter that, I mean, that was a very powerful letter that, is her name Nicole?
Nicole.
Sent on behalf of the beach advocates, and you know, we're a member of that. We have a beach. And I think that, you know, you don't want something like this to go through without public comment or without hearing from the communities that will be impacted by it.
Yeah, I mean, we've done this on a number of state laws where we've passed a resolution or such, so.
It also just, it really seems like somebody's got it out for OCRM, so, and I feel like they're doing their best to protect us and our beaches, and I think the least we can do is, you know, say that we support them and that we're against this.
Jimmy.
The motion is simply, it's not to get more complicated and convoluted and all this. The motion is simply making a statement. Isle of Palm City Council is against these budget provisos. That's all it is.
All right. So right now, we have a motion and a second on the floor, just to suspend the rules of order to entertain. That. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we need a motion.
To make a motion that the city of Isle of Palms issue a statement strongly opposed to these two fiscal year 25 state budget provisos.
I'll second that.
Additional comment, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nicole, are you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the motion passes?
Motion passes.
Ashley, what was your vote? I need your...
Sorry, it's aye.
For the, for the motion to speak out against it, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item is E, consideration of award of a contract for bulk container collection and disposal sanitation services. We had talked at our workshop about going month to month and referring this to committee. Staff's gone away and done additional work since about half of this contract would be a city expense either way. We felt that staff feels it more important in coming with a recommendation to go ahead and get into a contract and send it back to committee to figure out how we cost share with the businesses. Desiree, anything to add?
Yes, I provided a detailed schedule in the packet that shows all of the locations, number of cans, and the frequency of service of the commercial bulk container services. As you can see, about 15 of them relate to condominiums, residential applications, and the other 38 are commercial, associated with hotels, the golf courses, restaurants, some of the shops, et cetera. The total amount of the city's portion, what, what I heard, we continue to intend to do is collect the condominiums, the garbage from the condominiums. A lot of these used to have 90-gallon containers. We've shifted them to bulk container to increase the level of efficiency of the public works operations. So that expense, it's about, about $100,000. The other half, about $140,000, $120,000, is related to the commercials. We went back to the low bidder of the, all the bids that we received. The, the bid response for the city was $250 per yard. We asked what it would cost an individual property, commercial property, if they wanted to engage with them separately. Their cost would start at about $310. So there is a, a better, a better per yard cost for, that was provided to the city, that the city can offer that to the, to the commercial businesses. My recommendation is for the city to entertain a contract for the scope as we know it today. The RFP document indicated that the contractor should expect additions, deletions, changes in frequency. So we've, we're confirming that that 2.5 per yard cost, it's not going to change if the city were to change or eliminate some of the, some of the locations to be serviced. And we plan on having a meeting with all the commercial businesses and giving them the option. If the goal, if the city is going to be passing on the cost of this commercial collection, garbage collection, then we can offer them to stay within the city's contract at our rate, at $250, and then we would be issuing a, an annual invoice, not monthly, an annual invoice of the cost for that specific operation. If they decide that they want to do it on their own, they certainly have that option. More than likely, it'll cost them more in terms of a per, per, per yard cost, and that's something that could go through the committee and nail down what the fee structure would be if the city wants to pay the additional cost, pass that cost on to the, to the, to the commercial businesses, or enter into some sort of cost-sharing agreement. My concern is that right now, we're paying $3. That rate can go up if we continue month to month, and I would like to secure a low, you know, the low bid as quickly as we can, because we know we have a need for service in the community.
Yeah. And again, let's be clear, tonight, all we're doing is entering into a contract. Committee will figure out how we revenue share, cost share with businesses. So can we get a motion in a second, then we can go to discussion?
A motion to approve.
Second. Scott, and then Jimmy, and then Jan.
Yeah, just a few questions. So if, how long is the duration?
Three years.
Okay, so three years times, what, we're looking at 3/4 of a million dollars roughly, contract value?
Correct.
Okay, and if 150 of that per year is outboarded, in other words, we're going to have to collect it. So we're going to, we're going to put the taxpayer money out, and hopefully, we're going to collect that with, from the, the $450. We're going to pay the $450.
We'll pay a month, we pay month to month.
Right, but we're going to be paying, but we're only going to be billing annually is the contemplation?
Correct.
So are we billing in arrears, or are we billing in advance?
We would be paying as of September, we would be collecting as of September 1st of this year.
For the entire year for next year.
Correct.
Collecting what, garbage or funds?
Yeah, that, I think, we don't know that yet. Well, yeah, I think the intent was to build, if we...
Correct.
...cost share, was to build the businesses in January, close to a business license renewal, so you had a little bit of leverage.
Okay, so here's, here's my concern. Okay, so here's, here's my concern, we don't have a contract, we don't have, you know, I don't know if this is going to be a take or pay, you're saying that they'll go variable, in other words, if, if half the people decide not to take, take us up for it, just hypothetically, we got half the volume coming in, if I'm, if I'm Trident or any vendor, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm making my business decision and my pricing based on volume. If all of a sudden my volume's cut in half, are you saying that the contract that we're having, our price is going to stay the same, or?
The RFP and the, on the exhibit that we included, showing the locations of the dumpsters and the frequency, very clearly at the top, it says contractor should expect changes to this list, additions, deletions, or changes in frequency.
Okay, so, that's good to hear. So the, the question I have is, if we're going to have, out of $750,000 contract value, 450 of this is going to be outboarded, and we're going to have to collect. So we're going to be at risk, we're going to owe the vendor no matter what if the trash gets collected, because it's going to be our contract. And we don't have agreement on how we're going to necessarily bill with the clients, how we're going to collect with the clients, this is all hypothetical, and we have to get, we have to get agreement.
So we would be collecting it, so currently, those businesses that use the municipal compactor at Lot B, we pay the user fee, which is some, something that every other businesses pays directly to the county, and we already bill them for that every year.
For the user fee?
For the user fee.
Yeah.
Correct, the user fee that everybody else pays directly to the county.
Has everybody paid, are we 100% all customers, all clients, have they all paid up, or do we have any delinquencies whatsoever, or any disputes right now?
We, we are collecting from one.
Okay. I think that, well, my, my recommendation would be, I would never enter.
Could I finish?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I didn't finish your, your question. So we already collect that, our plan is to issue those invoices at the same time as renewal of their business licenses, and we would not, if they, if they select to continue with our contract, which would be a choice, then they would need to pay the city for that amount before we issue them a business license. They can't operate without a business license.
So since we just issued business licenses, we'll collect garbage for an entire year before we bill again, on their behalf, potentially?
September to January.
This would start September.
Okay. So we're still going to be four, four, at least four months out of collection before we?
Correct.
And before we get agreement from anybody?
I mean, worst case scenario is we don't issue the business license, we can, we can submit invoices, the, what I'm, the, the reason we tie it to the business license is we can control the issuance of a business license if for some reason they have not paid the city, they have any, any fees unpaid.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, my conclusion would be, I, I would, I think we got a little cart before the horse here. I, I think that we should define what the plumbing is, who's going to, you know, what is the, what is the pay cycle, how much is the taxpayer going to be out in front of this as far as exposure of uncollected fees, how are we going to collect, who are we going to collect from, who's going to have agreement? You know, I, I do have a hard time thinking that Kroger, who owns Harris Teeter, can't get a better price than we can for garbage collection.
So they are the only ones that use, they have their own.
Collection.
They have their own collection.
And/or the Sweetgrass, or whoever, or, you know, I just, I think we're getting in, and treading into a business, last we talked about this, we were going to cap it at 75, maybe figure out a yearly, a year transition to try to migrate the businesses onto their own, and not get into the collection business. It seems like this is flipped now, and we are now saying, we're going to provide the garbage collection for the entire island, we're going to go on the hook for potentially a year's worth of garbage before we get paid. There's going to be turnover with the tenants, I mean, I, I just think we're.
So the $75,000 that we have in the budget won't even cover the expense of the city collecting the condos, that's about $100,000.
I understand that.
So that's $70,000.
The price went up, yeah.
Correct. Are, are we still thinking of, in addition to covering the con, the, the collection for the condos, in addition to that, 75,000?
No, it seems like the condos are in residential districts and non, the non-commercial, it seems to me like we're, we should be providing that service, and that, that's a city service. I think the rest of this, because we're talking about this September-January cycle where we're going to be maybe stuck out a little bit, but then play that forward one more, one more cycle. So the, we're not, we're going to have, again, the garbage is going to be provided for the full year unless we collect in advance, and I'm guessing some of these businesses aren't going to want to pony up all this money in advance, maybe they will, or all of, I don't know if they all will, or some of them will. So we may be hanging out the whole year, the $146,000 before we go and collect that for the following year. I just don't know that this is a business that we want to get into, that's just, that's just my take. Until the plumbing, I know that, until the plumbing gets worked out, I, I mean, if we're going to do it, we ought to, we ought to set this up before.
We've got folks in line, Jimmy, Jan, and then Elizabeth.
Well, I think it's, it's imperative that we have a contract as soon as possible. We are subject to a lot of exposure to the contractor, they can raise it at $5 tomorrow, unless we do something. However, I am very interested in the backstory about how we got here, and how we got into this jam on this month-to-month thing, and we'll discuss that at a later meeting, but I'd like to delve into the details of what happened and make sure it doesn't happen again.
Jan?
I'm hearing from some of the community that we're unaware that this was coming up, that we're deciding on something that they haven't even been told about yet, and we're deciding on charges and fees and stuff, and I understand that it was a last-minute directive that was given to us from the, the Carter that does it now, but it's just, it's a mess. I think I agree with, a bit with Scott in terms of the, how we're doing payments, I would rather not have bills accrued for an entire year before we get payment. What if, what if a business goes, a company goes out of business, does that mean we don't get paid? So it may be better to have a different kind of billing system. I, I do agree that we probably need to start charging our commercial businesses for cartage, but it's, I know time is of the essence, but there are too many questions.
But is it? I mean, that.
I'm going to get Elizabeth, and then I'll come back to you.
So, I mean, my thoughts are, six days ago, we were sending this to committee to work out the details so that we could all make an informed and intelligent decision about how we wanted to move forward. And now, six days later, we're being presented with a recommendation on a contract I haven't read, on a term that I didn't know what it was until a moment ago, and that doesn't even start until September. So we're going to be month-to-month until September regardless. I feel like we have a little window there in order to send it down to committee and make sure, and kind of iron out some of this stuff, the billing, what, how we want to do the billing, because we will be month-to-month until September, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so we have, we have some time, I mean, it's not this, right this moment that we have to make this decision. I, I would just like to see a little more research done, and, and just some thought given to the particulars of this, and what we include and what we don't, and how we collect, and whether we collect, and to what extent we collect, it just, it seems, I don't, I don't know that I'm prepared to make this decision right now, for three, for a three-year term. I mean, you're asking me to make a decision that I wasn't, I don't feel like I'm able to make for the next three years of, of a budget cycle.
Well, I think that was exactly the point, that we were going to send this back to committee. I know there's some urgency with the, the length of the proposal, but is it possible to get an extension on the proposal? I mean, can we, can we have, I mean, from what I'm hearing, everybody across the board is saying, is it, this just came up, we don't have enough information, we need to know more, we need to know more on how we got here, we need to know more on how we're going to go forward, and it's, but, but we're going to sign a three-year contract. That, that sounds like the, not the way to go. So if there's any way that we can put it off until we have a chance for the committee to discuss it, and maybe get some answers to some of these questions, I feel like I would feel better, I think a lot of people would.
Could we meet after the holiday, Katie?
Well, no, I mean, I, I think the question is, how long do we have?
How long is this bid good for?
For the bid.
The proposal didn't say, didn't have a deadline on it, it's usually within 30 and 60 days.
Okay.
So I think.
So we have a little bit of time, so at least for one committee meeting, and then.
Before the council meeting in July, that would be the goal.
Yes, ma'am.
In the meantime, are we protected against any arbitrary rate increases? Is there anything written?
We received a letter a couple weeks before the end of June, that the rate was going to go up to $3. So that's what, that's the rate that we're paying as of June.
But do you understand my que, you do understand my question?
Yes, sir, but I don't know, I, all, all we have is the last letter saying that the rate would increase June 1st to $3.
So we still have exposure?
50 cents, is that one here?
I'm sorry?
50 cents?
Well, you said.
250 to 3.
Correct, from the lowest bid, it's, it's 50 cents more than the lowest bid.
Okay, but with the lowest, you got a bid.
We have four bids, the lowest was 250.
How long are the bids valid for?
That's what we just, we just had that conversation.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, 30 or 60 days, you don't know.
The proposal doesn't include a deadline, but typically, it's usually between 30 and 60 days, could be negotiated.
All right. I know that you did, like, well, I can read that you did some research and ultimately landed with Trident, but was Republic, I mean, they, they put in the same bid, I mean, I'm not suggesting that, but, you know, there are options, if, if Trident said, we need to know now.
Sure.
And Republic said, well, we'll give you till, you know, September, or something, I mean, I, well, month-to-month anyway, that's what I keep thinking, is that we have some time to make this decision, it just feels very, very rushed for a three-year commitment, and I, and I'm not, not super comfortable.
And the three-year commitment, that is also negotiable, that is a typical agreement that we would enter into for a service like this. The city can negotiate and say two years with an extension to renew for two more years, so that's, that's all negotiable.
Thanks, R and L.
Jimmy?
I just think, you know, it's just, you know, you've got a contract, you've got an offer, they're asking us for acceptance, it sounds like a legal contract, but there's no time certain, and those five things have to be in a contract legally, there's no time certain, they're not, you know, I hate to put labor to point, but we're, we're still just beating it up, like, we don't know if they're going to change the price tomorrow, is that correct?
That's correct.
On our current provider.
At, at $3. That, that's my main concern, that we've, we've got, can we get a temporary contract for, for $3 until September? Can we do that? Can we ask for that? I might have something in writing, I just, we're just, we're just flying by the seat of our pants right now.
We can, we can try.
Jan?
We can try?
Yes, sir.
Good.
I just think we need to communicate with the, with our businesses too, before we enter into agreement on this. They may not have the final say, but I think we, it, it's our responsibility to inform them and get some feedback.
And, and that is part of our plan, we just need to agree what, what we will be communicating to them, what that is. And I think that's to the, to the point, maybe there's just more information that needs to be discussed and need to be had, so that we can know what we're communicating to them, what the plan will be.
I think we should communicate with them before the final plan, in terms of what the bids are that we've received, what their, what their response would be, how they view it, so that we know going forward, possibly more about what to expect on the other side.
Scott?
You know, even within the next week or so, how hard would it be to maybe send out an email, or some communication to, maybe the chamber can help us, some of the business owners around here, just to get a poll on, hey, how many of you are willing to sign up, or do you want to go on your own? And, you know, I think, as we've said, you know, you got, we've got ties and communications to every one of these business owners, and that should be something that, I'm guessing Donnie knows them all personally, we could probably get them all, or a good deal of representative businesses polled, either formally or informally, within a matter of days, I would hope, now that we've got some information, and see if they're going to take it or not take it, and what their, what their preferences would be. Just get some feedback. And then we could have that before the committee meets, that would be fantastic.
Does it, we have a motion and a second, so we're just going to defer action or not take any action on that?
I think you can withdraw your motion and second.
Nicole, who made motion and second?
Whoever did that?
Councilmember Ward and Councilmember Anderson made motions to approve.
I, I would draw under the condition that we find out if, how long, you know, I'm worried if.
Staff's got that.
Are you sure?
Well, we will try, Jimmy.
You understand about contracts?
Absolutely, I do.
They just don't have a contract in front of them.
Right, but we should, we should have one.
Absolutely.
We have, we have a rate, we have a new rate by our current provider.
Okay, I withdraw the motion.
Yeah. Jan?
I withdraw the second.
All right, let's move along. Discussion of Fourth of July events, Desiree, you want to give an update on a busy day here?
Yes, we're going to have a busy day, the, obviously, July 4th is on Thursday next week. We will have a golf cart parade at 10:00 AM in the morning. I sent you all a note about, sort of historically, this event has been put up by community members. This year, they had submitted an application, the police department came back with some conditions, based on the fact that this event has grown significantly. It started with about seven golf carts running around the neighborhood, last year we had over 100. And some of those conditions included changing the location of the start location and the route, so that it allows for additional queuing capacity along the road. It, it put some conditions on throwing water balloons. We've had, over the years, many reports of injuries, complaints about people getting hit on the face, we've even heard reports of people using frozen water balloons. And, so that was a condition that, that was placed on the golf cart parade in order for the city to support it, and organize and help staff it. So we are putting together some, some parameters, and an incident action plan, a new route, some signage, some, some advertising, letting people know that the, even though the, the family that has historically put it together will not do it, the city understands that this is something that a lot of people look forward to and enjoy, so we want to make our effort to try to do what we can to, to, to host and facilitate the golf cart parade. The other conditions that are included in the ad are just state law requirements. The operator of a golf cart needs to have a driver's license, needs to have registration, and needs to have proof of insurance in the vehicle. We're, we're reminding people to not consume alcohol while they're operating the golf cart, and also reminding them to use the name, the number of people that the golf cart is, is four, if it's a four person, to have four people rather than eight. So the, the staff is prepared to staff it, we'll have a lot of personnel there with blocking the roads and for safety. This really isn't a change from years prior, we just want to make sure that if it's something that the city is sort of backing and supporting in a different way, in higher way than, than years before, that those, that those conditions are something that we remind, we remind guests of. So that's what we're going to have, it starts at 10:00 AM sharp at Fourth and Ocean, and, yeah, that should be fun.
How's the, how is the route different?
So the route used to start at Second and Carolina, so now it's going to be Fourth and Ocean.
Okay.
So they'll be queuing towards the cul-de-sac. Last year, we had so many people that the folks in the back were still lining when, you know, so that.
Never really known where it started.
So it'll start there, we'll have some signage and some folks directing golf carts as they come, so should be, should be a fun time.
Does it still go up Ninth?
I'm sorry?
Does it still go up Ninth Avenue?
Yes, it does. Ninth and Ocean will be the only other spot where we'll let people exit before, before the, the parade ends at Second and Charleston, Second and Palm, no, Second and Charleston. So that's that, we're very excited about it, and then the fireworks show will be at 9:00 PM, as we have always done, at Front Beach, the Sea Cabin Sphere, they're going under some renovation, won't impact the, the shooter, and as you all can imagine, we're staffing up for the entire weekend, we think it's going to be very busy here, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So a lot of kudos to our public safety and first responders, they're going to be working really hard all weekend.
Long shifts.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Desiree. Next item, boards and commission reports, board is on appeals, there was no meeting in June, planning commission minutes are attached, accommodations, tax advisory committee, no meeting in June, environmental advisory committee minutes are attached. Environmental advisory committee minutes are attached. Next item, ordinances, resolutions, and petitions. Second reading, ordinance 2024-04, an ordinance to adopt a budget for fiscal year beginning June 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
You recall, we've had a first reading, a public hearing, and again, just a reminder, this is for fiscal '25, not our future year forecast. This particular budget shows no tax increase and total revenue of about $28.6 million, and total expenses of $26.6 million. We've got a motion and a second? Oh, Scott, I'm sorry.
Just got some comments, please.
First, I want to thank you, Deborah, Desiree, and staff for all the work on the budget. Last year's budget projected IOP's fund balances remaining in the $40 million range over the five-year planning horizon. This year's initial draft projected government fund balances plummeting by $22 million to less than $13 over the same planning horizon. What changed over the planned period? Council approved payroll increases to address inflation and retention, plus approved a paramedic unit in headcount, adding roughly $8 million to loaded labor and other costs. A new city hall is being proposed with a low-end, heavily caveated estimate of $6 million, including financing. Issuance of $9 million in new debt plus financing costs. We have debt rolling off, but interest rates have doubled. A major beach renourishment project, which puts IOP on cycle with the 2008 and 2018 projects. The original projection, based on recent estimates, caused IOP's beach renourishment fund to go negative by $5 million. The solution was simply to reduce the estimate by $5 million to bring the beach fund back to zero balance. I cannot support knowingly and arbitrarily adjusting an estimate of this magnitude that leaves IOP's beach fund empty, and deficient for several years. Page 53 of the meeting package shows the beach fund projection. Our auditors highlighted expense increases in the last audit report, and staff have recommended we add new revenue streams. I agree. Council spent only a few minutes discussing new revenue streams with a starter list of about a dozen possibilities presented at a workshop. Council committed to many of these. I have no doubt with the updated budget revisions, IOP has sufficient funding and reserves to fulfill the current obligations, current year obligations. However, in my opinion, this year's budget sends IOP on a spend trajectory that increases reliance on variable revenue, mainly depletes some of IOP's fund balances, and relies on more expensive debt financing with none matching fund sources. It also prioritizes discretionary project spending before we have identified and committed funding plans in place for IOP's future resiliency needs and projects, such as proactive beach management, increasing flood mitigation, traffic measures, water quality, and increasing employee costs. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Got a motion and a second?
Let me just say one thing. I, I, I'm going to vote for adopt it, but I do agree with virtually everything that Councilman Pierce said. I, I do feel like, although the current year that we're, fiscal year that we're approving looks fine, and we'll get through that, I am concerned of how much the forecasting we are proving in, in essence, a five-year look of forecast, and I am concerned about how much has changed. I mean, we've, and, and I think we've added a lot, and we talked about putting the need for other revenue streams, but we, I agree, we've not done much. And I, I would encourage that we change this process, and instead of just looking at the budget at the time it comes renewed and through the normal process, that we take a, a more active role all year long, that we're continuing looking at revenue sources, whether that's through license fees, whatever the, the list that we generate, and start to implement those, you know, now, that we not stop looking at the budget, just because it's, we don't need to approve one. So I, I am concerned, though, as we look out, you know, five years, that we, we're light on beach renourishment, we've got a lot of debt built in. I don't think it's something the city can't live with, but we do have a lot of debt built in. And me for one, before I approve or agree to approving a new building, I'd want to make sure that we've got the right revenue sources to kind of help offset whatever the debt, debt load is for that. So, again, I'm going to vote for it, but I do agree that we, I think we've got more work to do with our, with our budget and how our, our forecast down the road looks.
I just want to concur with what John said, and I think something that's really kind of, I don't know, brought that home to me is, is even this, this whole dumpster situation kind of coming up out of nowhere, and it just so happens that it's coming up out of nowhere when we're talking about the budget. And, and I mean, I blame myself, as, I think we're, we all can do a better job of looking at things more proactively. I think I'd like to see, again, like, starting next month, or, you know, in the next couple of months, that the, especially the committees, start looking into specific things on each committee where we could potentially, where there's cost savings, or revenue, or, you know, just, just asking the question of, hey, should we be spending this money on, on dumpsters? And, you know, that's just one, that's just one thing that came out of the blue, and I wonder how many others are out there where we could potentially do better. So that's my goal for myself, is for next year, for us to do better on that.
Hi, um, this is my first budget cycle, as I've said a couple of times now, because it is. And, you know, I don't, I don't honestly feel like I contributed anymore to this particular cycle as a city councilwoman than I did when I was sitting out there and just making citizens' comments. I mean, I, you know, we were presented with, I've, I've longed, for a decade now at least, I've had a concern that our general fund, what, what is our completely unrestricted revenue, is not keeping up with our expenses. And while I am very appreciative of the tourism transfers that we're able to make, and I understand what we can make and how we can make it, and when we make it, you know, I've looked back, that number just keeps climbing, and, and we don't seem concerned about attempting, in, in whatever small ways, and they are small, to do what we can in the general fund. We had 10, 10 opportunities, one being raising property taxes, which I don't think any of us wanted to do, but a number of them would not have had any impact to residents at all. And, and there was not any discussion around that, really. I mean, I had, I had expressed an interest in an increase in building permit and license revenues, some, maybe some changes at the rec, which I think there have been, they've been tweaking some stuff out there. But, you know, I'm primarily concerned because I'm hearing from the planning and building director that, you know, the revenue, they're concerned about the revenue because it could be going down, because construction's slowing down, because the interest rates are getting high. Deborah's indicated that she's felt like we need to figure out some things in the general fund to get some more revenue streams in there, and, and we didn't, we didn't do any of it. It just, it didn't feel like, I, I don't know, it just didn't feel very like I had much of an opportunity to say something and have something taken into account, because it just would, the next draft would come back and it would, either something would be in there or not, but there was no, I, I don't know, I don't know what I'm trying to say, I'm just, not really.
Jimmy.
Well, oh, this is well and good. Lot of generalities, not many specifics, I'm hearing. A lot of, we could have done this, we could have done that. My experience has been, over the years, just pick two or three, maybe four things, and concentrate on them, and concentrate, and can bring it up, and bring it up, and bring it up. You can't, I'm just telling you, reality is that you can't bring it up once and then kind of wonder what happened. It's just, my experience has been, you just have to be persistent, and decide what your goals are, and include them with the budget, and get specific with it and say, "I want to do this, and I want to do this," and just keep pounding it, and pounding it, and pounding it, to make it happen. A lot of the public works projects that I've worked on over the years, take a minimum two, three years. Just a simple thing like curb cut at Ocean Park Plaza. Desiree, that-
We did that pretty quick, Jamie.
It was about 18 months. That was just cutting some concrete. The point I'm saying, I'm not, I'm just saying that my experience has been, if, if I was able to achieve answers, is because I just kept pushing and pushing and pushing for two or three things at a time, and don't stop until I get answers. And you can do whatever you'd like with that information. But I'm, I think it's a good budget. I think the motion is to adopt a budget for this fiscal year, and that's, I understand what everybody's saying, and I agree, like, to look into all of these, these generalities and make them specifics, and we can work on it in the future, but this motion is just to adopt a budget for the next year.
So we've got a motion? Go ahead, Desiree.
No, I just, a comment. I certainly agree with the concerns. I think one of the exercises that we have been talking a lot about this year, this fiscal year, has been related to the beach. And knowing that if the goal, you know, we talk about the beach, beach preservation ad hoc committee, and, and them being tasked with identifying a different policy for the renourishment, or a different funding mechanism to make up that gap, but what, what I wanted to make sure was very apparent and top of mind to this community is, if the city wants to take a more proactive approach on beach renourishment, we, we are going to have a, a huge gap that we, that we need to, that we need to make up for. I would say that from my perspective, having gone through a couple of budget cycles now, one of the challenges with the workshop setup, and having no votes at the workshop, is one of the challenging pieces that we have as a staff when trying to understand where the consensus is. And I think that maybe to your point, Councilmember Campson, it, you know, the feeling like there was no, you know, no consensus or, or in, in some of these initiatives. And when we went through the committee, the committees made recommendations on specific projects or changes, and, and that gave us a clear direction of where the committee, the committee were, was on a particular issue. So that's just something to consider as we look at preparing for the next budget cycle, what changes can be made to the meeting structure that could facilitate that kind of discussion in a more clear direction about what the drafts will include, what initiatives we want to see, so, just a suggestion from our perspective.
One more suggestion.
Picking up on that thought, I think the council, with, given the importance, and I think you can kind of tell how I feel about the budget and the finances, I think we ought to reconsider reconstituting the Ways and Means Committee. That way, we can have votes at those meetings, and then I think we can dive deeper into the, not only the finances, but the spending details, and just dive a little deeper. And I'm not talking about doing this tomorrow, but I think that's something we might want to, we might want to consider.
One last closing remark, if I may. I totally agree with that. Years ago, I can't remember when it was, but for many, many, many years, the Ways and Means Committee of City Council was three members.
Right.
And they did all the heavy lifting and stuff, and then presented the findings in a concise format to the council for their full vote, and, and their approval, and their suggestions.
Elizabeth, are you?
No, I'm good.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Ashley, you want to make sure we get your vote in?
Aye.
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 Did it pass?
Yep, motion passes.
What's the number?
Seven two, or, six two.
Six.
No first readings, next resolutions and proclamations. Resolution 2024-03 to recognize the city's responsibility to provide a safe work environment for its employees. We can have a motion and a wave reading?
Motion to approve. Wave a reading?
Second. Desiree, you want to, just some context on-
Yes, so this, we, we present this resolution to city council every year. The staff has a safety committee, and they meet pretty regularly to review safety policies, any accidents that we've been having, and identifying how we can improve training to ensure that we provide a safe work environment for folks, and, and those that drive city-owned vehicles, what are some of the strategies to, to keep them safe while they're operating their jobs? So this is something that-
Annual.
We certainly support. We do it every year, and it solidifies the city's commitment to that.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is from our environmental advisory committee, Resolution 2024-04 to support the adoption of the Charleston County Climate Action Plan. Douglas, you do want to do a little background before we even take a motion on this one, if you don't mind? What happened to your table tonight, Douglas? We have voting tomorrow. We have voting tomorrow, I forgot.
This is coming from the environmental advisory committee, and I, I think that it bubbled up in their committee because of a similar, similar set of actions that happened in the town of Mount Pleasant. They have what they call the Green Committee. That Green Committee made a similar recommendation to town council of the town of Mount Pleasant, and the town council unanimously approved a very similar resolution. One of the members on the environmental advisory committee was, was part of the committee that wrote that plan, so was, was very, was involved and was knowledgeable about the plan, so they had a good discussion about it. As he kind of explained to the committee, the plan is all carrot and no stick, there's no, you know, there's nothing that would happen if they don't meet the goals, it's more of an aspirational document, and not kind of new laws that will come directly from the plan. There are definitely recommendations about things for county council to consider, but yeah, this is, this is for the county specifically. The city of Charleston has a similar plan, but this is the Charleston County plan.
And this is just to show our-
And this would be-
Support for the county to take it.
Yeah, and their county council will be considering adopting this plan, I believe it's early next month. So, you know, kind of time is of the essence with, the, the environmental committee talked about taking another month, but in the timeline that was given, it wouldn't give us time to have a resolution to the council before, before they consider it.
Gotcha. So we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Other questions or discussion items? Douglas, thank you for bringing that to us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No executive session, there being no further business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.